Our commission chairs. For a round of comments on comments, questions.
Feel pardon, sorry, we're starting broadcast.
Oh, we're not online? We're not on air?
Give me just a moment.
Okay. Should I?
I can hear you.
Now we're good.
[Laughter].
Yes, please, come, come, come.
If you want to take my seat, I'm tired.
You can even have our seats if you want. We have been sitting on them for a very, very, very long time.
Part-time job.
Just as a facility.
We scrub that.
We can stand and sit. So are we good now? So I'm starting from the beginning or not so much? We are in open session. This is a work session with our commissions. It's part of our budget March Madness or March Marathon, whatever it's M and M. And the idea was, you know, during normal, the usual work sessions, only a number of commissioners gets to testify that are somehow relevant or close to the topics or the subjects, but not everybody has a chance. And everybody is touched by the budget. The budget is relevant for everybody and therefore.
Oh, my gosh.
We thought that this year we will do a kind of a work session with you around of, you know, discussion. I will ask you to introduce yourself, but I would like to start with who is online. I don't know that.
We have Alexim Aroitus with the Disability Advisory Commission joining us online.
Disability Advisor.
This is Alexim Aroitus with the Disability Advisory Commission.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you so much. We will do a round of introductions if you want to start.
I thought I just did. Could you not hear me?
I couldn't hear you very well. I couldn't hear you very well, but everybody could. So that's okay. So let's start from right to left.
I'm John Lawrence. I'm the chairman of the Northern Virginia Juvenile Detention Commission. We run both detention center and shelter care.
Yeah, thank you for the second time that you come.
Yeah, I came Saturday too, so I'm sorry about this.
Joan McIntyre, representing Climate Change, Energy and Environment Commission.
Lara Malakoff, Community Development Citizens Advice Committee.
Great, thank you, welcome.
Arbor Johnson, here with the Commission on the Status of Women.
Andrew Ferrera, the Tenant Landlord Commission.
Yes, awesome.
Tenley Peterson, Planning Commission.
Caroline Haynes, Forestry and Natural Resources Commission.
I am joining Arbor Johnson as well from the Commission on the Status of Women.
Awesome, yeah. Thank you so much. So the idea is to ask you to say a few things, I mean, how you feel about the budget, what are the pressure points or what are the things that you find good, not so good, or so-so. And let's start with our Disabilities Commission. Let's start online.
Oh goodness, I thought that I was very low on the list that Mason sent around. Let me pull everything up.
I see that now.
Do you want to maybe take the next person while I grab some stuff? Or do you need me to go right now?
Absolutely, absolutely, no problem at all. Forestry and Natural Resources.
Yeah, but second, I do need to leave, but I can go second.
You need to leave, and then there's a couple of people who've been here a long.
Yeah, if you are under time pressure, let's start with people who are under time pressure first.
Cool. All right, it's Forest here.
Neither floor is yours.
Go ahead. Okay, thanks. I'll keep it quick, and I brought goodies. So Happy Women's History Month, and we hope you will all join us, so these are for you all. We hope you will all join us at our Women of Vision event next Wednesday. So I did already give specific input on the budget this year, specifically thanking you for remaining committed to childcare and also providing free menstrual products, hence the end-period poverty. I know that with your help, especially, thank you, Maureen, you have allocated budgetary money for making the machines and county facilities free. We're not there yet, and I guess it's been pushed, retrofitting those machines has been pushed to the Q4, so please just stay on top of that. Inflation is definitely hitting menstrual products. So, but I did want to talk today, take a few minutes to share with all of you, the feedback that we've been getting from citizens with an ongoing outreach project at the county fair, other places as well, but primarily at the county fair for the last three years. We've had a table within the county section asking women and girls, we don't ban men from participating, but we really try to get a lot of women and girls to participate in a survey, asking what is the most important issue for women and girls in Arlington County. In 2022 and 2023, which is obviously before the election, but post-Roe v. Wade, the number one issue by far was reproductive rights slash abortion. And so I would just say that I know we don't think of that as being a local issue, but it is. You can't get an abortion in Arlington. You can get information, you can drive to Falls Church, you can drive into DC, you know, there's emergency contraceptive available. This is something that I got through my son's girlfriend in college, who is a reproductive justice advocate, and gets these and gives them out at the fraternities and sororities, great idea. We had these as a giveaway at our table, they went very quickly. So I know it's a tight budget year. I just ask you to think about ways that we can make the women and girls of Arlington know about resources available for their reproductive care, for abortions if necessary, for birth control, for Plan B. And so this was the little sign that we had. Let's keep advocating in 2022 and 23 and 24, if our participants chose, that should be 22 and 23, reproductive rights is the number one most important issue for women. What's next? You tell us. And we did get a lot of feedback, and I can share that with you. So in 22 and 2023, the number two issue was, you guessed it, childcare. So we, I will not belabor the point, but actually I heard an NPR news story this morning that childcare is now more expensive than college. It's true. I have a kid in college, and I paid for, you know, childcare here in Arlington for all three of my kids, and I remember thinking that at the time, then there's, you know, for most of us, no scholarships, no loans for childcare. So, you know, obviously, the Department of Education is under attack, and a lot of things that we've since counted on for our children are under attack, but let's not forget about the youngest in childcare. So having said that, we took off abortion slash reproductive rights and childcare this last year in 2024 because we are assuming that, yes, those are the top issues. The question we asked this last summer was, the wording was, which of these issues do you think Arlington County should address over the next 12 months? And the options were women's health, pay equity, maternity and family leave, sexual assault and harassment, and LGBTQ and non-binary inclusion. We did, we had 1,379 people participate by voting with a chip in a bowl. By far, the top issue chosen was women's health. It received 434 votes. So we know from our conversations that many women were using that as a proxy for abortion and reproductive health, but, you know, certainly not everyone. Many women talked about menopausal health, you know, there's a lack of information about that, mental health, menstrual health. And we were asked by many women about what county resources are available, including, you know, what information is available. And I know that the Public Health Officer Department does have a lot of resources, many of them free. So that would be another thing I would encourage is, you know, just getting that information out there through social media, through all these teen advocacy groups, you know, there's like five different clubs at Washington Liberty focused on like women's empowerment and, you know, equal rights. So women's health was by far number one. The second issue was maternity and family leave. So maternity and family leave, pay equity, and sexual assault and harassment were all very close, with just under 300 votes for each of them. But maternity and family leave was next, 294. I think it's wonderful that the county does offer its employees maternity slash family leave. One thing that was discussed with a lot of the people that visited our table is, well, how can, what can the county do to make our private sector employers, who most of us don't work for the county, what can we do to encourage them, incentivize them to provide paid family leave? So I would think about that next time we're wooing someone to Arlington, you know, with incentives. I think childcare, paid family leave, come on, Amazon. So that was the other issue. And then the third was sexual assault and harassment. Most of the conversations we had around this were focused on starting education early age, about what is harassment. It's unacceptable. I think those of us with kids and public schools know there have been incidents in middle schools of girls being smacked on the butt and called derogatory terms. You know, this is our 10-year-olds. This is our 11-year-olds. Why are these boys doing this? So let's start the education early and often, and I know Project Peace and Doorways have some really good programs. So that concludes my presentation, and again, I thank you. I'm very glad to live in Arlington in this day and age, but we can make it an even better place to be a woman slash girl. So I have extras of each of these because our chair, Caroline, is hyper-organized, and she actually typed. We also had women asking, we had a sticky board, big board for people to put sticky notes, what's the best thing about being a woman or girl, and what's the hardest thing? And we had like over 300 sticky note responses. It was awesome. Jax was there, and it was like, people were gathering around and reading it. It was great, so we hope to repeat it. But our wonderful chair, Caroline, actually typed up all the answers to the sticky notes, and Maureen's nodding, you've probably seen this, I just happen to have five copies, so lucky you, more paper to take home. Caroline told me about it, but I haven't seen it. Yeah, so we did send this, but I know that you probably don't have time to read everything you get, and we're happy to share this with, you know, everyone in the county. This was all public. So thank you, and again, thank you for your, whatever this workday is, 12-hour workday, putting in the listening and the work. Thanks, Jax, for being here. We got each other's backs.
Thank you so much for this. Any other comments?
Well, I just want to say thank you so much for Arbor, for reflecting our commission's thoughts so greatly. We spend a lot of time with community outreach because we trust and believe that the board will reflect their decisions in all aspects, in what the county cares about, and what the people of Arlington County want to see from everyone here. So it's just wonderful to have our voices heard, and thank you again for hearing from our commission.
Yeah. Colleagues, any questions or comments?
What if, I'm tempted to say, listen to everybody. I just feel like we've.
That's fine. But she has to go, that's.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer questions, but I also want to be conscious of my colleagues.
Listen to Charles.
Thank you. I'm going to a Wonder Room. No.
I guess one question I would have in terms of reproductive healthcare is, I know we don't have a literal clinic providing abortion services in the county, but do we know for a fact that normal providers are declining to provide, you know, methopristone prescriptions or DNCs at VHC? Like, I guess I'm a little bit skeptical that you can't get.
I don't know that, but I do know that it's hard to find out where to get an abortion in Arlington. And I know my specific OB-GYN doctor told me, one of our providers doesn't like to do abortions, so we don't do them, but we can refer you. So I think if I don't know where to get an abortion, I don't think you can get an abortion. Or certainly, a pregnant, you know, 17-year-old doesn't know.
Yeah, it's a question that I've asked my OB-GYN, because it's an important part of my personal healthcare decisions, and they were basically like, yeah, like, why are you even asking? Yep.
Oh, really? Yeah, so, and I, a friend of mine was OB-GYN at VHC, but yeah, they don't.
They don't do them there.
They don't do them there.
That's annoying.
Yeah, right. And certainly, there's no information. If I Google abortion in Arlington, what pops up is Planned Parenthood in DC, which is far from here and not easily accessible. I mean, it is easily accessible by metro, but you have to do switches, and the one on Langston Boulevard and Falls Church.
And then there's Whole Women's Health in Alexandria as well.
Yeah, that's also far. You often have to dodge protesters at the Falls Church one. I had a long conversation with a woman at the fair who's a nurse who volunteers there as a, yeah, yeah. So I mean, honestly, that's, in theory, a low-cost thing that the county could do, is tell us where you can get an abortion. If those doctors are willing to have the list, I mean, I don't know that they are, but.
Would Planned Parenthood, oh, sorry.
There's no Planned Parenthood in Arlington.
I heard from two different people, both a VHC thing, and also that there is a new facility in McLean that is highly recommended, and so I think we should try to figure out how to share it. And I, so that's new, because I think it's like two years old or something.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I don't even know about that one.
Well, the question here is, what's the best device to make that information available, and how to position it in a way that it's findable, right? That it pops up when.
Right, even, you know, maybe Planned Parenthood would work with us. I have spoken with someone who had a bad experience at the Planned Parenthood in DC, and so was looking for alternatives, but, you know, partnering with a nonprofit group to provide the information is definitely at least a step. Or even like, I don't know, a teen, like my, this young woman who's in college, who's part of a teen reproductive justice group, actually, she's 21, she's not a teen, but a young adult, a youth reproductive justice group. And she got sent these, and they ended, somehow ended up in my house, so I was like, okay, can I give them away at the fair? So we shouldn't be relying on that, is my point. So there are groups out there, and I think these usually cost like $20 each. But again, like, I'm not a nurse, I didn't really have good information about how to use them, other than saying follow the directions, but it's Plan B, and I don't know where one would get these. Are they, I think you sometimes can buy them at like CVS, but I've looked for them and haven't seen them.
Mr. Spain?
I'll just keep it brief. Thank you, Arbor, and to the entire commission for your hard work, and also kind of pivoting to what you said earlier about one of the priorities back in 2022, 2023 by survey is the rise in cost of childcare, right? And as a person who has a wife and two daughters and almost a four-year-old granddaughter, I see it firsthand, even again now, the cost of childcare. And I think there's a lot more that we perhaps can do, and to your point about working with, you know, talking to these businesses and new entities that come into Arlington, how we incentivize that is something to give thought to, because these costs right now, in comparison when I raise my kids, are just out of control. And they also are unsustainable. So thank you for your leadership. I look forward to seeing you next week at your event, and thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Short question on the budget, if I may, Ms. Cunningham, maybe. Last year, we appropriated some money for, you know, the dispensers of Metro Products, et cetera. I had very high hopes that this will be a substantial.
So the money that was allocated last year, I think, was $10,000 for retrofitting the machines to make them free. So last we checked, that had been pushed, the money's allocated, it's there, it's under facilities, I think, but it had been, the actual retrofitting has not yet happened, and we were told, I think we asked, and maybe you asked also, that it had been pushed to Q4 because of lack of something, resources or people to do it or something.
Can I ask something? I mean, maybe the manager knows that. Do we have them here in this building?
No, the machines are there, but you have to put in a quarter.
Yeah, well, have we retrofitted them here in this building?
No, they're not retrofitted. I just went in the women's bathroom. They are not retrofitted.
So in other words, we have to plead guilty as charged.
And I will say that Fairfax County has had them in their libraries for three years, so just saying.
But the tent hasn't, it wasn't for everywhere, it was just, was it just?
It was county facilities.
County facilities.
Oh, okay.
I think, so, I mean, that's libraries, schools, community centers, this building.
Okay, we will check on this. This is why I'm asking.
Thank you, thank you. It's a little bit, but it really makes a difference. Not for me anymore, though.
My sister used to quiz me always, how many do you need each period, and I always got it wrong.
Yeah, 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 like the 100.
It is 22.
100 tampons in space. Yeah, yeah.
Per.
But everyone's different, too, so.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Thank you. We will see you next week.
Right.
Yes, we hope to see you all.
So who else is a little bit under time pressure? Then we can go with our list. Our Forestry and Natural Resources Commission, Ms. Haynes.
Is that working?
Yeah.
Oh, there it is. Okay, I didn't see it. Yeah, thank you. Caroline Haynes with the Forestry and Natural Resources Commission. When I was here with you last, our commission had not yet met, so we had not actually had an opportunity to focus on some of these issues. So it's going to sound a little repetitive, because it turns out I actually hit it pretty close to the mark. So I will go over these quickly, because you've heard them before. But I did want to just say, given the broad uncertainty swirling around us, we generally commend the county manager's proposed budget, especially those supporting programs and policies that will continue to build a firm foundation for Arlington in lots of different areas. However, as noted previously, the commission does object to the proposed zeroing out of the funding for the Northern Virginia Conservation Trust. As the sole land trust in our region, NVCT provides key resources for land conservation in Arlington and in our region. Cutting this organization, we believe, is inconsistent with the support for other programs that support our natural capital. And Forestry and Natural Resources Plan really does provide that policy roadmap for funding some of the priority action items in the county manager's proposed budget, and we appreciate the adherence to that plan that was recently adopted. Just want to highlight a couple of those that we have talked about before. Big one for us is the moving forward on that low residential housing study, and making sure we actually have room for trees and can deal with some stormwater, and that that continues to be a high priority, that we're dealing with that 70% of land in the county where we still have room to plant trees. And then again, Odysseus Species Management, no surprise there, was also a high priority, and I know we talked about the importance of that long-term funding. And as, I've got lots of great tables I can send you, but it's essentially the intensive treatment for the first, like, three to five years, and then it's a maintenance schedule. But that maintenance schedule does require somebody going out and walking the parks and seeing what's going on there. So building in that additional funding is really important, because we're essentially at a point where without that, you can't take on new parks. So just having that in the long-term budget, I mean, in the base budget, would be very handy. And obviously, the commission also supported continuing funding for the tree can be funded. Did want to let you know, we are looking at putting together a group to focus on issues, how do we make that more sustainable over the long term, given the fluctuation in funding of that? So we'll be reporting back to you on that. But appreciate the fact that we've got the momentum going, want to keep it going, so sort of this is much more of a longer-term prospect that we're going to be looking at. Also, very supportive of the deer management, moving forward, knowing that the implementation of that is really key to addressing the urgent problem of the lack of regeneration of our forest with excessive deer browse. Support the tree watering and maintenance, and want to make sure that when we get these trees in the ground, that they actually will continue to grow, and we're not just checking the box, that we can actually have long-term health of our tree canopy. The commission also very much supported the support for the nature centers, and again, they're taking off with their programming, which supports the bigger, broader environmental education to a wide and diverse audience. And I would just note, too, as we witnessed during the pandemic, parks, trees, and natural areas provide a much-needed and much-sought-after refuge for teens, for children, for young adults, for parents, for low-income residents, for the elderly, for the unemployed, for those with mental and physical health challenges, the list goes on. And we also know that the voluminous research shows that spending time in nature is really critical for our mental and physical well-being, so preserving and managing these spaces is equally important now as it was during the pandemic, given the tremendous turmoil and uncertainty that so many of our residents face right now. So anyway, thank you for your time, really appreciate it.
We will go through the individual presentations, then we have questions. I believe the next one is Ms. Malakoff.
Do you, to any of the folks who've been here like four hours, there are a couple of people who've been here three or four hours.
Well, I asked, and there was consensus to endure, and we really are very, very, very appreciative of that.
Thank you.
This is not the right measure. This is not the right measure or the right comparison, my humble opinion. Ms. Malakoff.
All right, thank you. So the Community Development Citizens Advisory Committee, we're pleased to be part of this annual budget process. As many of you, I'm sure, know, we support the process by reviewing the programs and making funding recommendations for where the county's community development fund should be directed. This year, we reviewed, scored, and ranked 43 program applications, which may be a record in my time that I've been involved in the committee. This is for FY 2026 funding, obviously. The total funding requests were almost $1.8 million. So we worked very closely with the staff, who are wonderful in supporting us, to formulate the latest budget recommendations. We, of course, reviewed, voted in support of the action plan, and the recommendation to fund 33 out of the 43 applications and programs. These programs are specifically focused on ensuring that many of the county's underserved, low-income, moderate-income families and community members have access to the programs that help them reduce homelessness, maintain affordable housing, really achieve economic mobility, and really foster neighborhood sustainability, and make Arlington a vibrant and successful place for everybody. So thank you all for supporting that work. I think one really important part of our work is that each of the committee members are bringing their own experiences, values, and their own kind of parts of Arlington into this process. It's a competitive process. We are pretty rigorous about how we score and rank applications, and really make considerations for how we think the funding can be best deployed to make the most impact in these low, moderate-income communities and among low, moderate-income families. We always review applications with an eye toward diversity and equity. This year, the grant minimums per grant were increased. Clearly, what these programs could do with $20,000 or $30,000 a few years ago, they can no longer do with that amount of money. We therefore recommended a significantly smaller list of programs to be funded this year than we have in my time on the committee, and that was not an easy shift to make, because it really meant we had to make some hard choices about what we thought maybe had been funded in the past, but maybe won't be this time around or in the future. I think it really. I think it really shows that this need for kind of a very competitive review kind of process for how the money can be deployed. And, you know, thankfully, our citizen input on that is really an important part and really imperative to making sure that this funding has the impact that it, it should have. You know, these programs, we believe, are the ones that will best meet the need. But again, those were some really tough choices that we made in our recommendations. There's always a balance between meeting the need where it lies in Arlington communities and focusing on organizations and programs that have the capacity to really implement strong programs. And so, we're always kind of having those discussions to balance that and kind of helping to try to be good stewards of the, the limited funding that is available. I think a challenge moving forward is maintaining the coordination with some of the other competitive grant programs and making sure that we are coordinating in a way that, again, has the most impact, right? Is we're not duplicating efforts. We're not duplicating funding to make sure that it can be most impactful. I think, you know, we would certainly welcome additional guidance from the board about the various priorities of the competitive grant funding programs that exist and making sure that we're coordinating and, you know, we know what their priorities are. They know what our priorities are. And we can, we can really be in coordination on that. I think we are in the process of stepping back a little bit and thinking about our overall process for how we approach reviewing the grant awards or reviewing the applications for award. And as we're thinking about how we can do that more efficiently, how we can do that more effectively, I think that that will force some, us taking a stance on how we want to approach this that may be a little bit different. I think, you know, thinking through how we can award or, you know, recommend award for funding that is the full amount that is requested versus kind of recommending to spread it more evenly across programs so that they can get a significant enough amount of funding to do what they need to do and really have an impact. The last thing I will note is on April 2nd, we have the Community Development Bus Tour, which is our favorite day of the year, our favorite meeting of the year, where we will get to actually go visit some of the programs that we have taken part in, making sure they get funding. So, we're really excited about that. I Googled Arlington County Community Development Bus Tour 2025 this morning, and it came up pretty easily on the link. So, go look for that, and we hope you will all join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malikov. And thank you, everybody who's working very, very hard. It's a work under adverse conditions always. The next one, tenant landlord, Mr. Ferreira.
Thank you. I'll keep my remarks brief. I'll stick to our letter that we submitted to you all earlier, I think, yesterday. We commend the county for its continued appropriation of $150,000 for housing inspections. These inspections are critical, particularly as landlords and tenants adopt to the HUD's new Inspire regulations and supplemental Arlington County guidance. This funding also ensures that the Housing Division can continue to inspect over 4,500 CAFs annually as outlined on Page 410 of the proposed budget. We believe these inspections are crucial for maintaining housing quality standards in Arlington. Furthermore, the commission has addressed various concerns pertaining to code enforcement. This appears to be a trending issue in Arlington. Therefore, we respectfully advocate that the county board reconsider the proposed elimination of the code enforcement inspector position as outlined on Page 791 of the proposed budget. We are concerned that the increasing compliance time from 63 days to 90 days, essentially one quarter of the year, would be a disservice not only to the tenants, but also to the county overall. Arlington County is an exemplar for our neighboring jurisdictions regarding the quality and expectations it sets for rental units. It is essential that code enforcement also be equipped to conduct proactive investigation, inspections and investigations. This will also avoid predicaments such as the Serrano situation, ensuring that the county is proactive rather than reactive in mitigating situations that disproportionately affects those who are underserved or lack the resources to advocate for themselves. Overall, we, the commission thanks the opportunity to provide input on the proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferreira. I believe now we have the Disability Advisory Commission. Ms. Mavorydi.
All right. Most of my comments I had already sent in, but just to reiterate some of them and add a few things. Everybody is concerned about, you know, what's, what's happening at the federal level and, you know, how people are going to be supported. We are definitely concerned that people with disabilities in Arlington and around the nation will become more vulnerable. I did want to, I did want to commend the county board for working to keep the housing grant available to people. It's difficult, and it's going to become even more difficult for people to get housing support. And so, Arlington County having a housing grant program is something that we are very glad to see to help. Doesn't always help everybody because some people are, you know, at the very, very bottom of, you know, just SSI, for example. I've seen people not be able to make it with a housing grant. But anything that's a little more than that, it can really help. So, we're glad about that. We are also concerned about eliminating the code enforcement position. We are very concerned about making sure that all facilities and all new developments are not only accessible but usable. And we worry that having less staff will make that more difficult. We also, one, I wanted to comment about the, let me find it. The Disability Services Support Grants. They've been level-funded for a long time. As you probably know, costs are going up. More people are going to have more needs. So, you know, while we're glad that that's not being cut, we are concerned about whether the nonprofits that we distribute the funds to are going to be able to properly provide for the many disabled people in Arlington who need specialized services from these nonprofits. And the last comment that we have is that, as important as it is to meet accessibility standards, sometimes a facility or a complex or whatever it may be can meet accessibility standards and still not be as usable as it should be. One of our commissioners has a son who uses a wheelchair. His apartment complex has a very heavy door, which he's not able to push open. That enables access to, I think it's the computer lab. I think there are some other amenities that he should be able to access. So, you have probably heard the disability community push for power doors in the past. I'm here to push for it again, but I'm also here just to get it into folks' minds that, you know, it is very important to think about how are people going to be using the space rather than just, you know, does the space meet these standards? I understand that sometimes the standards are all you can do, but it can lead to situations where technically it fits, but then the minute you get somebody in a wheelchair or the minute you get somebody with a vision impairment trying to navigate it, they really struggle. So, you know, I hope that, you know, developments can really focus on, you know, not only is this technically accessible, but is it, is it usable? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mavorydi. The next one is Julie Evans with the Community Oversight Board. She was here this morning.
She's also joining us virtually.
Hi there.
Hey, Julie.
Hi, Tocas.
Go ahead.
Thank you for giving me time this afternoon. I appreciated the opportunity to walk through this with y'all in person. I'll, you know, kind of reiterate that we support many of the ACPD requests, including the salary increase where, you know, our officer pool is having to, we're having to compete with our neighbors and the private sector to keep our very talented and skilled officers. Our fiscal year '25 accomplishment was really to fulfill our, you know, given directive of clearing the backlog of cases. And we have a very significant amount of momentum coming into 2025 with reporting and administrative maturity, but also a growing backlog of policy analyses and ideas that we'd like to be able to advance. And in order to do that, we will need a dedicated budget, rather than trying to kind of pull budget resources from other elements of the county. I think, you know, in light of those topics being very serious, policy discussions on excessive use of force, bias-free policing, and the investigation practices themselves, we want to make sure that this year we continue our kind of co-creation of solutions that keep pace with national best practice in law enforcement, but that are also tailored to Arlington County's specific community needs. So, just for the folks who weren't there before, we have two upcoming special projects that we're very excited about, a traffic stop analysis to look for any bias in our policing practices related to stops. And then also bringing on a subject matter expert in bias-free policing. But we are currently staffed below and funded well below our kind of regional peers and also kind of national parallel organizations. So, like Cleveland, Ohio, being a similar population to Arlington, Virginia, has a $1.3 million budget for their COB. And recognizing that the, the value of reference budgets is not terribly useful for populating a meaningful budget, we do need to understand that our, our needs are growing every year because we dig into these issues with the police and we get significant input from the community organizations like the NAACP Restorative Arlington and other folks who come to our meetings and participate with us, Arlingtonians for Justice and the Civic Association leadership. So, our, our summary of budget requests does advance our outstanding request for a deputy auditor, which I recognize may not be totally feasible in this year. And that if that's the case, to really prioritize giving us a budget that we can execute independently from kind of external priorities and timelines. So, that's all I have this evening. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Well noted. Ms. Parker, thank you for joining us.
Thank you so much.
Parks and Rec.
Thank you for inviting me to come back. I'm sorry I was late. We were planting. We planted 105 trees today at Upton Hill.
Oh, that's.
So, thanks. I agree.
That's almost saying to us that we should come and find you where you planted the trees instead of you coming to us.
I don't want to, I had lots of great volunteers who were there. So, it wasn't only me. But thank you for inviting me back. As Carolyn mentioned, I've already said quite a few of the things that I'm about to say, but due to lack of time, you're going to hear them again. So, we will probably also have comments on the DES budget, which we haven't gotten around to reviewing yet. But we do want to reiterate our constant concern that DPR and DES work closely together on natural capital issues. And you've heard before, and this is a stronger statement this time, many commissioners in our PRC are concerned that the proposed budget is not austere enough. And they discussed a prioritization policy, which at present is, and, and I have to say, we haven't discussed this as a commission yet. That will happen on Tuesday night, and then we will send in our letter. But the prioritization policy would be to prioritize programs and practices that if they were suspended, would create greater future costs. And, and there's two priorities associated with that. One would be children and youth programs. If we don't invest in them, that's a future cost that we can't get back. And the other is investment in our natural capital. Invasive plants would just run rampant, and we would take back, they would take back all the gains that we've made. So, we really need to continue to invest in natural capital. You've heard our comments about the youth and children. We're very pleased with what, what's in the budget. We understand about the Madison preschool, but try not to cut anymore. And the nature centers, we're very, very happy with the funding of the nature centers. On the natural capital issue, you know, we are very much in favor of the deer management program that we had to put in. Just today as an example, the trees cost $2, but the deer cages cost $11 each. That's the disparity that we have to protect from the deer. So, putting the deer program is very cost-effective from nonprofit. Also, we really value the continuation of the invasive plant program, but it really should be funded permanently for the same reason. And even though it's a great innovation that the state has allowed volunteers to chemically squirt invasive plants, it's not going to be anywhere near enough of a substitute for IPC. We're still going to have to have invasive plant control contracts. Maybe they can be diminished a little bit, but it's not going to be a one-for-one substitution. We really like the provision for watering trees and maintaining them. Those are very wise investments. And we're also very pleased to see the tree canopy fund. I just want to highlight, well, this will be in our letter with the, with the site, but there was a very interesting study by the University of Louisville in Kentucky that people who lived in a more densely-planted area had a 10% to 15% reduction in the risk of heart attack, cancer, or dying from any disease. That's a direct quote. And it's a scientifically-done study. It's really impressive. So, I hope you read it when you get the quote, I mean, the link. And we also would think that it would be a very important use of natural capital investment to keep funding Northern Virginia Conservation Trust. On the revenue measures, we see that there's a 10% increase for fees in park and rec activities. We're okay with it because you also have the policy that people are never turned away from going into park and rec programs for being unable to, to pay. We hope that you'll keep that, especially the program or the bullet of the, of the policy that allows federal workers who might not meet the other qualifications but who are out of a job, to do that. There is some, excuse me, some concern about some of the fees for some of the things being pretty high. And we had a discussion with DPR. We hope to have conversations going forward reviewing their cost recovery policy. They had been, they had hoped to have that review completed by now, but we're going to be working with them more closely on that. And we also want to look at ma, and making sure that the public schools and the park and rec pools, you know, swimming pools are coordinating the right way so that they're maximizing revenue for events. Anyway, that's something to look at. And so, we are also okay with the county manager's workforce cuts. But we're concerned about the forester position. We don't want that to be difficult to reinstate. We want a forester-equivalent position, maybe. I'm not sure what the details are for how to make that not, you know, be hard next year, but we don't want that to happen. And we're really concerned about the deputy director position not being funded. It's okay on a temporary basis, but she works very hard. She's got a huge department, and we want to make sure she's well-supported. We had a few suggestions for other austerity measures. One was on the PEGO, having to do with the Cherrydale Park. Right now, there's a proposal for $500,000 to go into redesigning that park or upgrading the design of that park so it's ADA compliant, which it's not right now. But it's an extremely steep park. And some people think that it would be better suited for stormwater retention and bio swales and a different kind of space instead of an, an actual park. So, it, but, but if you take that money away from PEGO, we wanted to go back to the DPR budget, obviously. And the priority that we. And the priority that we. The priority that we would, we would put on that would be to have the fourth park service area manager, which has been unfunded for a while. One person is doing all the parks out of Route 50, and it's a big, it's a big project, and it could be done better if we had another. But of course, you know, it's in the context of austerity, so. And so on that point, some of the commissioners think that DPR should be looking at cuts in the range of 3% to 5%, putting the extra money that you ha, you know, putting the differential into some kind of a stabilization fund. We noted that the county manager has $13 million in potential cuts, but that's not nearly 3% to 5%. And so I'm sure there are some things in there that could be addressed, but I, I just feel duty-bound to tell you, I certainly don't want you to do it. But if it is necessary, I mean, if we're facing a region-wide recession, we want to go in with both eyes open, and we want to make sure that the priorities are clear and that we're not just cutting willy-nilly, that we're really looking at things that would cost more if we didn't fund them. So thank you for your time. Answer any questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to our planning commission. Thank you for joining us, Ms. Peterson.
Yes, happy to be here. Thank you to you all for the work you do, listening to us and, and leading our, our community. Thank you to county staff, Mr. Schwartz, I saw him earlier, for the, the very difficult challenge that's before all of us to deal with the economic climate that politics in the world has handed to us. We've spoken already about some of the issues that I'm raising tonight, so I will be brief as well. Understanding that it's a difficult budget year and hard decisions have to be made, I don't think any of us are envious for the position that you all are in. So, but first, again, the planning commission, as we kind of say generally year over year, please do not cut any revenue generating positions. In this case, it is a principal planner position. So these principal planner positions and planning, community planning positions in general are revenue generating in that they further our work on CMRI. We are looking at possible plan Langston Boulevard implementation that could get projects built faster, start bringing in some commercial tax revenue, and that'll help us in the out years, which is really beneficial. If we get the cross-training that we are recommending for staff in this principal planning position, they could also help with site plan review. So in the very least, if, if you're not going to fund this position this year, consider freezing it instead of canceling it outright, which will make it easier to renew the position in the future. And, and like I said, making sure that Mr. Frusorali is making sure staff are cross-trained so that depending on the economic climate, staff can kind of transition to different positions that can be more effective to making sure we're, we're making the best use of our time. We all heard the community planning work plan for the year. There's a lot that they want to do, and so having the full staff will enable them to do that for us. I also talked to you previously about the proposed fee increases. The planning commission majority did vote to support the proposed fee increases as the county manager has recommended. We are very supportive of the principle of 100% cost recovery, but since there is a large jump in many of the, the fees, we did have two concerns that were just, part of our discussion was that how could this impact development? I know NAOP was gonna have the presentation. We haven't heard from them as the planning commission with their concerns with fees. I know staff was gonna do some research on what percentage the fees make up of the total project cost, so it may be fine to proceed forward, but we want to make sure that those fees wouldn't get passed on to tenants, and then that, you know, impacts our commercial resiliency. And then also how the fees are going to impact our policy priorities, you know, specifically daycare, which our commissioner on the status of woman brought up, making sure that we're really supportive of daycare as being able to thrive in the community, and if they're seeing large increases in costs, you know, their profit margins are so narrow, it could be hard for them. But ultimately, planning commission did vote the majority to approve the fees increases, and we're also very interested in the overlap of our work and how other departments are impacted. So looking at historic preservation, if they're reviewing proposed historic districts and they're not able to do so in a timely manner, that could theoretically prevent site plans from moving forward and being able to actually be built if, if the county board approves them. And looking at the Office of Sustainability's green incentive business work and, and your commissions, and, you know, biolaya and stormwater issues are regularly priorities, so what you've said about those issues, we, we agree with. Also, Ms. Mavriditis, if I'm saying the name correctly.
Mavriditis.
Yes. Thank you for, for your recommendations. There's also a lot of overlap with our commissions, and thank you for your commission's work on our site plan review committee. And yeah, I think that's it for me. Thank you very much. I'm so proud to be at this table with you all and, and doing the work, so thank you.
Yeah, the whole point was to bring everybody together. Yeah.
Thank you. It sounds like we agree on a lot.
So last but absolutely not least, Climate Change, Energy and Environment Commission. Oh, yes, Mr. Lawrence. For some reason, I don't have you on my list. That's my, that's my, my problem, so you go after Ms. McGinty.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of our thoughts. I think the last time we were in front of the board on, on the budget issue was when we were just getting our head around what was in the budget, and we're right now still working on finalizing our letter, which will be done on Monday. But general overview is, is for certainly, we very much appreciate the fact that the spending on climate-related issues is more or less being, is being preserved pretty well in the budget and the county's moving forward on many of the key issues, particularly when you're looking at solar installations, transition to electric vehicles, energy efficiency upgrades, that those are all, all coming forward and not being affected. We do have a couple of concerns, kind of in the budget, maybe an out-year issue to actually really deal with, but wanted to kind of raise them. First is in the staffing, is between the air team and then with the climate policy office, is whether or not that is sufficient. In the air team, the, is actually being down one position, and several of the positions seem to be embedded positions within other departments to help on specific issues like EV charging and solar. I mean, all to the good, but, you know, it also then kind of depletes the ability of the air team and then the climate policy office, which is still in the process of hiring the additional two slots to actually really be much more outward-facing and engaging the community, because after all, 96% of our greenhouse gas emissions come from, you know, outside of the government operations. So, and, and that's where, you know, kind of looking at, and we've got, you know, very impressed by the assistant manager for climate policy and her work plan. It's very ambitious, it's very energetic. She's really working at ways of engaging across county government, across the community, looking at what the best practices are, really in other jurisdictions, both locally as well as nationally. So, you know, but what she's got planned is very ambitious. It will take, you know, is, is that really gonna be staffed enough, even giving kind of the force multiplier that we, you get by bringing in other departments within the government as, as climate becomes part of, of how they're, they're engaging and the services that provided, as well as tapping into resources of various organizations and communities within our local jurisdiction. It's just, you know, what do we need to really make this very successful? Where are the, are the, it really can, you know, what, where do we need to focus to really make the difference? And then the, the other issue is actually in the Climate Action Fund. Again, kind of looking at how that's been evolving. Certainly appreciate adding the extra 500K to address the Climate Action Plan, but most of the spending is really actually going for county facilities and operations, which is in, in many ca, you know, electrification of buildings. Madison Center is over $1 million. Much of it actually seems to be going towards fixing what's probably a very antiquated electrical system, which should be part of kind of standard renovation as, as you're going forward, replace, conversion of LEDs in the courts, the Lauer Run resiliency hub, obviously important for us to be doing that, but to begin thinking more clearly about what this fund is doing, because right now, other than the EV chargers, there's really nothing that's supporting this outreach activity. So hopefully, at least the 700,000 that's kind of remaining will be directed in that, and as it's supplemented, it can help support the climate policy office and air in terms of, of more outreach. And then, you know, within that respect, we've also got the green building incentive policy. That's, you know, as that comes, is ready to go, and if it becomes really the focal point of a community program to transition all buildings across the county, what's the staffing requirement, what, you know, what are, might be the funding requirements for incentives and that. There's still things to be worked out on that, but kind of again, looking forward. And then finally, again, with future budgets as a whole of government is being, you know, kind of more explicit in terms of the investments that are being done and what the implications are for, for climate and savings. I mean, you know, a lot of what they're doing in the buildings just makes sense, you know, and, and it's actually, you're gonna save money, there's health benefits, there's resiliency benefits. So again, thinking that's part of a climate budget is, is really embedding and thinking about those expenditures as being business as usual. So that's it for me.
Thank you. And now, last but not least, our, our, Mr. Lawrence with the Northern Virginia Juvenile Detention Facility.
All right. Thank you, and I appreciate you letting me come here, since I know I don't represent only an Arlington population, but, you know, the Arlington population in the center is, you know, consistently the, the second highest behind Alexandria, and we always have one or two kids in shelter care. So, you know, Arlington is, is very close to us. And I just, I have two issues. One, a high-level issue on the operating budget, and the other is a, an urgent USDA issue, which I know your manager knows about, but I'm not sure you do. On the operating budget, the jurisdictions agreed, you want us to staff for 46 kids, and we sent you a budget to staff for 46 kids. We're about 30% understaffed right now. So we rely on a lot of overtime, because obviously, we can't close ever. And our shifts are 12 hours. So when we say overtime, it's not, oh, somebody's working eight hours, they have to work 10, it's they're working 12 and they have to work 16, or they come in for another 12-hour shift on the weekend. And if you fund us there, then in order to get closer to the 46, you know, staffing level that you want, we have to take out of our operating budget. So we either, you know, building maintenance, we have, part of our building is almost 70 years old, the rest is over 30, and if you've been there, you've seen it, it's, it's just a lovely wreck. Or we have to take it from programs for the kids, which obviously, we're not gonna do. We have an operating reserve. It's not big, but to me, and maybe I'm just, you know, politically liberal and fiscally conservative, you don't use a reserve except for an emergency. That's really why it's there. You know, your, your roof suddenly collapses, that's why you have a reserve. And we have a capital reserve for things like if our roof collapses, so. But also, reserve money is, it's one-time money, and you don't put one-time money against a recurring expense, because you know, it's automatically put a hole in your budget next year. And I understand, you know, if we staff up, there would be, you know, consideration for Alexandria, Arlington and Falls Church to try to make us whole on the back end, but that's, you know, the back end where we would have to front the money, and given what's going on across the river with honestly Elon Musk and his flying monkeys, your job is going to be so much worse, that I'm just not optimistic that, you know, the back end is gonna look a whole lot better than the front end. So I would ask that you, you know, look at that number, because we are severely understaffed. We are the, the third highest in pay in the region. DC is the highest by far, behind Fairfax, and then we're third. And DC runs a jail. I mean, you've seen the articles about their juvenile facility. We don't run it like a jail. Kids don't go into their rooms and get locked down unless they did something violent. They're talked to. People are trained in desolation, anger management. It's a harder job to do, and we need the staff to do it. So that's my, my first point. The second point is, two weeks ago, the Virginia Department of Education sent a note around saying, by the way, DJJ, the Department of Juvenile Justice, is no longer going to be facilitating the USDA funding. All the JDCs, all the juvenile detention centers, all the group homes, so for you, that includes not only the center, shelter care, Argus House, Aurora House. Basically, it said USDA is cut off as of June 30th. They gave us a week to be able to put out an RFP to become our own school food authority, which included a requirement for one full-time person to be, you know, only USDA. I mean, the bar was ridiculously high, the time was ridiculously short. Coincidentally, the Juvenile Detention Association had their quarterly meeting in Richmond last week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. DJJ came and spoke, and they made it clear, they were out of compliance. The, the person who ran the program unfortunately died in the fall. When they started looking into what was going on, they found they were out of compliance. But the way they are gonna come into compliance is by just stopping doing the program. And they made it clear, they're not going to get back into the business. Because I asked them, usually if you're in, out of compliance, you figure out what's wrong, you figure out how to fix it, and then you fix it. And they just said, no. So that, that is, for us, about $90,000 combined, 70 for the, for the center, about, almost 20 for, for shelter care. And obviously, you know, you gotta feed the kids, and these are teenagers. Oh my God, they, 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 they love the food we serve, they eat a ton, and, you know, they come from food insecure families. So, so the operating reserve, I, I'm, in my own mind, I'm budgeting that going toward USDA. We've put in a placeholder, and we're trying to see if we can become our own food authority, if it's, you know, financially feasible, if we can partner with ACPS, the Alexandria Public Schools, you know, something to keep it. But given the situation now, I, I'm assuming that 90,000 is something we have to fund ourselves. So suddenly, you know, we asked here, and, and you proposed here, and now our budget is up here. So I would just ask that you do whatever you could. I understand you're, you can't staff us at 46. You can't afford that. You could a few years ago, maybe, but not now. But we need more than just where we are now, because that's, that's just way too harmful for daily operations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. That concludes this round. Maybe our liaison to different commissions have questions or comments? If you can still stand, Mr. Lawrence.
I'm for everything. No cuts, more services. No. I do have a, the, each of the things, I will say this, now's not the time for us to respond to every one of your comments, but we will wrestle, we already are starting to wrestle with each of the things that you said. That doesn't mean we're gonna end up where you end up, but it is important that we say that we're all taking notes and we're wrestling with the specifics, and you guys are commission chairs, so you know that it's possible that on some of the things you're asking for, the answer will be no, I'm sorry. But that doesn't mean we're not wrestling with everything you said. So that's the only two cents I want.
Any other? I'm so thankful for this. Really, it centers the mind, frames the thinking, brings back, you know, the good dialogue on, on the issues that you find and you see as, as more important. It definitely changes the prioritization, and at least in my mind, very often, is that you need the human conversation to, to do that, right? So thank you for that. We all recognize that we are looking into a difficult budget this year, and probably a budget that will be narrowing in the options available as we go, at least for the foreseeable future. So prioritization, I, I, I like the, the way of thinking, the method. So more to come on this. So colleagues, if there are another concluding guests?
I was just gonna say, very briefly, that I've talked to several of you, but I haven't talked to all of you, about this being a really important time for us to come together as a community and to re-center on our values and where we put our dollars individually and where we put our time individually. Thank you to all of you who put a lot of time in individually. But I would just encourage each of the commissions to think about, how can we respond to the moment, to reach out to the broader community? There may be different people who have a little time available right now or who are interested in supporting. interested in supporting some of the work directly through philanthropic sources. So if we can be of help there, please let us know, but also please be our voices to do that in the community.
Right. So then, we are now adjourned, without objection.
I wanna stay long.